Good evening. Today is May 10th, 2022. The time is now 5:35 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. We ask Councilman Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come together asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County. Continue to remind us that all that we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in the service of humanity in Georgetown and humanity worldwide. My prayer is for peace worldwide. We pray for peace for all, and we ask of all of these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. Please note for the record that we do have a quorum present at this meeting. We move down to the approval of the agenda. Is there motion for approval of the published agenda?
It's moved.
It's moved by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. A public comment session. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with the clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. At the end of the three-minute period, a buzzer will sound, and we ask that you wrap up your comments promptly once that alarm goes off. Madam Clerk, anyone signing for our public comments?
Mr. Chairman, we do have three speakers signed up tonight. Each will have up to three minutes, and the first speaker is Wes Covington.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. So I had a run-in with my old friend here, Mr. Rock Benfield, in the Association of Counties, and he just, he looked at me, says, "Please, whatever you do, just don't, don't upset him before I get a chance yet." So I'm not going to upset anybody. And here as a friend, you may have seen some emails from me. I feel like I've been having a conversation with myself, unfortunately, but I feel like the conversation is still here, trying the best way I can to be diplomatic about everything. And I'm a quotes guy, and so I thought, you know, you try to start conversations out, try to break the ice, you try to say something that's difficult to say sometimes with a quote. So diplomacy is the art of saying the nastiest things in the nicest way. So how can I say things nicely? How can I not be nasty? You know, how can I be, you know, respectful? And I think the overriding thing for me right now is the public's time and being respectful of the public's time and your time tonight. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of details I could get into if you dared look into any of the emails I've been sending to staff and to you all, started copying you all since you would kind of get an inkling that, hey, here's this guy who's got some concerns. What's really going on here? But another quote, and this is from a famous British horticulturist, ironically enough, since a lot of the issues we're having are over landscape ordinance. And the quote goes, "The real art of conversation is not only to say the right thing at the right time, but to leave unsaid the wrong thing at the most tempting moment to say it." So I'm going to try to exercise that discretion and just beg you, please, at this point to assist me and just have a meeting with your staff and us to work through what happened, how we arrived in the situation we're in, which is very costly to my family. We, we are small business owners in the county, and I like to think of us as longtime residents, but we are come here as, you know, we're from, we're from South Carolina, but we are come heres, if that matters. But we, we've been here about 10 years now, and I just appreciate all the help you could give me and all your consideration. And with that, I wish I could give the rest of my time to Mr. Benfield, but I can't, and thank you all for everything you do.
Michelle LaRocco.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Michelle LaRocco, and I am a resident of Georgetown County. I am a property owner, and I also happen to be the manager of the Environmental Services Department. I am coming not to speak on behalf of myself, but I am here not asked, but by my direct reports and those people that work for me and my colleagues across the county. I've given a lot of talks in, in public, and I will admit that this is the most nervous I've been in a long time, but I will be brief. In the publicly available budget documents, we always list the Georgetown County Compensation Plan, and it is indicated by grades. Each staff member's role is identified with a grade, and that then has a salary requirement, a minimum starting point. And I don't know about other departments, but I've never hired anyone above the minimum. And so I've marked my copy up, but I went to South Carolina Living, I'm sorry, MIT's Living Wage Calculator, and the South Carolina living wage is $14.58 per hour, and that was about six months ago when I did this initial research. By our grade system, that puts that wage between grade 114 and 115. We have 16 grade levels beneath the South Carolina living wage. Additionally, South Carolina, there is what's called the housing wage, which is done by region, you know, depending on your local circumstances, and that indicates a wage where 30% of your wage would go to your housing cost. In Georgetown County, that is $15.50. That puts that wage between grades 117 and 118. I don't have all the answers, but I do know that of our full-time employees that are not grant-funded, according to our budget book, we have 612 personnel, and there are 95 positions that we fund below that wage. 15% of our staff does not make a fair wage in Georgetown County able to live. In groups like the Environmental Services, these are full-time employees, up to 30% of whom do not make a wage that can allow them to live sustainably in Georgetown County. And the general fund is 22%, and law enforcement is 10% of the employees below this living wage. Again, I don't have all the answers, and I, I do want to just highlight to you the gravity of the problem and the unsustainability for our future and hope that you can see a way to provide our employees with the dignity of being able to work one job in Georgetown County for the long term. Thank you very much.
Wesley Gibson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. On behalf of Antoine Maybank, I would like to thank everyone for the outstanding history-making track dedication for our Olympic gold medalists. If you missed that day, you missed a special day. That day was a success, and it was history-making because you had both the city and the county represented in one place. And Antoine is still humbled and thankful for what you guys did, and I'd like to commend you all. Council members, County Administrator Ms. Christian, Beth Godal, and Jackie Broach and staff did an outstanding job. I spoke with him this morning, and he thanks all of you for making this day a great day in Georgetown County. Hopefully, next year can even be bigger and better. And it didn't seem big when he was here, but he let the little kids and adults, anybody that wanted to hold an Olympic gold medal, take a picture with it. And his daughter said, "Mr. Gibson, I don't know what's wrong with my dad." I said, "Why?" He said, "I never touched the gold medal before. Let me grab it." And she's 22 years old, so that was very, very special. And again, we just want to say thank you. I mean, if you go out there and look at the stone that you and the city bought, if you look at the park, if you look at how it's being utilized, if you look at the old people, young people, even babies out there walking around that track, I mean, it is, it is just money well spent. And out of everything that went on, Antoine told me this morning, he said, "Wes, you got to get me a picture of me racing the squirrel from the Coastal Observer." I told him I'd do that. Second, council members, please talk to your rec commissioners. Information is not getting to the community, and from the recommission to you guys, information is not getting back because they can't get a quorum to have a meeting. I've been to every meeting. There are some people that come there with concerns, they, they can't address them because they don't have enough people to get a quorum to have a meeting. If they, if they, if they're not going to, you know, if they have job concerns and can't do it, please ask them to step down and get somebody that can serve. Thank you.
That's the final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for your, your comments. Let's move down to the approval of minutes. You all have received the recalcum meeting minutes of April 26, 22 in your package. Is there a recommendation for adoption of those minutes?
Motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
It's moved by Councilman Galkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. There is one matter included on the consent agenda, and it was briefly approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That's RFQ number 21-06, say, construction manager at risk, New Georgetown County Detention We move down to the appointments to boards and commissions. There's a recommendation for the appointment of Mr. Ronnie Adams to serve on the Georgetown County Fire District Board, Fire District One Board at large. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Ms. Adams for the Fire District Board.
It's been moved by Councilman Newton for the approval of Ronnie Adams to serve on Georgetown County Fire District One Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. We have a few first reading of ordinances, and these ordinances will be read into the record. Ordinance number 22-14, to amend the comprehensive plan, pit your land use map to reclassify One Acre Park parcel located at 981 Oakland Road and further identify as TMS number 02-0404-001-2200, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Ordinance number 22-15, three-zone, one parcel of One Acre located at 981 Oakland Drive, identified as TMS number 02-0404-001-2200, from Forest Agriculture to Village 10,000 Square Feet Residential. Ordinance number 22-16, three-zone, a 1.14-acre tract located at 76 Maribor Court in Paulus Island, further identified as TMS number 04-0166-01900, from residential one acre to 10,000 square feet residential. Ordinance number 22-17, three-zone, one parcel, 0.80 acres located at 9892 Ocean Highway in Paulus Island, identified as TMS number 04-0165-001-0200, from general residential to general commercial. And ordinance number 22-18, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 22 operating budget of Georgetown County. We'll go down to our nonprofit spotlight. Backpack Buddies. Backpack Buddies, Larry Chapin, Kathy Hozel. Okay.
Hi, I'm Larry Scott from Pauli's Island, and I'm here to speak about the Backpack Buddies Program. Each of you gentlemen should have received a brochure. My wife is a coordinator of the program, but she is out of town with some young ladies that met in college many years ago, so she's enjoying that solid, you're going to get the condensed version of this program. But what the Backpack Buddies Program is, is a supplementary program for students that have hunger needs. Unfortunately, we cannot feed students for the entire weekend, but we supplement their, by giving them lunches each Friday. The program was started as part of the Service Committee at St. Peter's Lutheran Church in 2009. It was conceptualized and created there. It's not a true backpack. We give them bags of food items because it's all volunteer working. We could not figure a way to give them actual backpacks and then try to collect those backpacks each week because students lose them or forget them, and we don't want to leave anyone out. So it's more of a lunch bag program than backpacks. But we just celebrated our 13th anniversary with serving over between 500 and 600 students. The program began, as I said, in 2009 with 25 students at Waukama Elementary School. Now we are serving five schools, Waukama Elementary, Waukama Intermediate, Plantersville Elementary, Sandpit Elementary, and Andrews Elementary. The Andrews Program is run by funding that we get and then pass on to them. The other five, other four schools are run by volunteers through our church. What we do in each August at the beginning of school, when registration is happening, we give the each building forms for parents to fill out. We do not police, we do not judge anything. Any student that wants to fill it out, that's great with us. We don't look for people and say, "No, you don't make, qualify for anything." That doesn't happen. If we find out from the schools, from teachers, and guidance councils and stuff, that a parent has not filled it out, and they believe that they really need to, then we encourage them to participate in the program. When we get those forms back, we create a database, and then what we do with that database is we ask for their names, address, not their names, their teacher name, their year in school, and if they have any allergies. That's very important. We create that database, and then we use bags that we put labels on, and then a menu is created for each week. And most of the items that we get come either from Costco or from Sam's Club. Other places do donate some food. Loads of foods in Pauli's Island has been fantastic. People are walking through the checkout lines, they are asked if they would like to donate some things, so we get many items from them also. That's very, very helpful. And then what we do is, one Tuesday, we pack lunches for five weeks, sorry, for four weeks at a time. All the items are non-perishable, and there's sample items that are shown in the inside right of the little brochure. Cereal, milk, pop tarts, Chef Boyardee soup, and then fruit items like oranges or puddings with fruit items in it, things like that, energy bars, and none like that. And then what happens is we deliver the food items in big bins to the schools, then the teachers and the schools are responsible for distributing those items to the children each day, or each Friday. It's entirely run by volunteers. We get together, we did it today, we had about 25 or 30 people, it's today only. Some days we have as many as 30 or 40 people helping out packing the lunches, and then we deliver the bins to the different schools. When the program was started, it was funded only by donations from members of St. Peter's Lutheran Church, and at the church, we ran some spaghetti dinners and things like that with guest speakers to raise some money. Since then, we've developed some rapport with quite a few donors, and many of those are listed on the back of your program. The Benel Foundation has been very, very good to us, Alliance Club, as I said, Loads Foods, some other local churches, book clubs, women's groups, things like that have really helped us out. It costs approximately $20,000 per year to run the entire program, and we're always looking for volunteers. Our latest opportunity for fundraising was the Palmetto Day of Giving that just occurred about a couple of days or a couple of weeks ago, and we had a goal of $5,000, but we were very blessed and received over $9,000 in contributions for that. So looking forward with the program, we're looking forward to continue it and possibly expand it to other schools. We know there's other, many, many other schools in the county that have students that would benefit from this program. Any questions I can field or answer or anything like that?
Yes, Larry, I have one.
Yes.
I've been involved with Backpack Buddies through Andrews Elementary, our church supports that and does the packing and...
Kathy Hemingway?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Headed up by Kathy and also our Rotary Club in Andrews, I'm a member of, have been supporting it for years.
Right.
But one thing I didn't hear you mention is why, why we pack these up and give it to them on Friday evening when they go home?
Just, just so they, it's on a weekend, because many times when they come to school, the schools sometimes have lunches or special things for them, but on Friday, we're not sure what happens to some of the students.
Correct.
On, you know, over the weekend. It would be great if we could pack enough so that they could have food for, you know, all day Saturday and all day Sunday, and then come back to school on Monday where they might have the breakfast or the school lunches provided for them, but... From again... And also, that's another reason why we use non-perishable items, because we don't want things going bad and the students and things. We try to avoid having things where they might have to be heated up and stuff. We don't know what conditions all the students or the children have, but we do hand out, we do give out food that's in, and Chef Boyardee items and stuff like that, which are really some bulk to them rather than just a little snack.
We never get to see these, these kids, you know, that get the packages, but talking with the teachers of these kids, some of the teachers have commented that, you know, this is the best meal some of these kids will get all weekend until they get back to school. So it's a, it's a very important, very, very good program. It's well-needed.
And there's, there's a need in our county, yes, all over. We just started in Pauli's Island because that was close to where our church is, but, you know, Plantersville, great people at Plantersville, a lot of the people over there. But because of COVID, another thing that happened, we had to close things down because we were not allowed to go to the schools and things, so we, the past two summers, we've combined with the Baskerville Food Pantry, and we handed out like over 1,000 lunches and bags of food with them during the summertime. At Plantersville and Sandpit, we personally do not pack these. We create their database, we give them all the bags and all labels and all the food, and they've been packing them themselves. I hope to get back to Plantersville and help them pack, because like I said, they're great people, I have a lot of fun with them over there. Thank you, Larry. Any other questions?
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for sharing this evening.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the information, and thanks for all you do. Okay, we'll go down to our Human Resource, Risk Management Special Presentation, Mr. Ackerman.
Mr. Chairman, we are going to do a dual-purpose presentation tonight. First up, we're going to talk a little bit about safety in Georgetown County. We've, we've been discussing in different budget workshops and things lately involving the budget about our workers' comp and our overall safety program, and so in light that we're going to be presented a safety award by the South Carolina Association of Counties tonight, we thought it prudish to go ahead and unveil our latest effort to instill a focus on safety for the employees of Georgetown County. This is a short video that Holly Kozel, who is right here, our risk manager, actually sort of came up with the idea a little bit, and I think she had a little help, and she went around and actually did all the picture-taking and stuff, and Mr. Randy back here, Randy Akers, helped put it together. He did all the magic part that makes it shine. So we want to, we want to let you guys take a look at this. The video is titled "I Am Safe," and it's meant to bring focus for everybody that working safe and being safe at work is not only for your own personal health, but for the folks around you, whether it be your coworkers, your family members, your neighbors, your church members, any other folks in the community, because when you get injured, it affects a whole lot of other people, not just you. So that's the purpose of this video. After the video, Mr. Benfield will come up and present the safety award from the Association of Counties, and if you will be so indulgent, this is actually a pretty big award. We would like to get county council in a group photo to receive this award if you will give us a moment after, after the, after the presentation. And I just want to introduce Mr. Benfield real quick before he steps up. So Mr. Benfield is actually Director of Risk Management Services for the South Carolina Association of Counties. He's been doing this for about the last 29 years, helping counties and other groups across the state try to improve their safety and help their workers go home in the same or better condition that they came to work in. He conducts on-site assessments, analyzes lost data, formulates mitigation strategies, reviews policies and procedures, conducts staffing, and on and on and on, just about anything he can do to help us out. And on the side, he teaches risk management liability classes as a guest instructor at the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. So he will be presenting this right after the video.
That was a great video. Mr. Chairman, Council, attendees, I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight for a few minutes to recognize these special things your county has done towards risk management. You know, risk management is very simple. It's what we do to keep some bad stuff from happening. And in a county, you want to preserve and protect the best assets you have. The greatest asset your county has is its people, and that video you just showed shows how those people are important and how those people... So that was a great video. Thank you, guys, for what you've done on that one. Every year, the Association of Counties, we reach out to our members, and we say, "What have you done this year that's impacted lives, budgets? What has helped your people in your county?" We evaluate all the responses, and in January of every year, we give awards based on activities that were done. And I want to tell you all two things tonight, bring to your attention. Number one, from a risk management standpoint, to have a successful risk management program is not one person. It can only be done as a team, and I want to let you all know, based on some things I'm about to tell you, how successful your team has been. It takes the backing of county council, your county administrator, your risk manager, all your department heads, your safety committee, all those coming together to be successful to protect your people. Your county's done that through several different ways. One way we measure that is called your Experience Modifier Factor. It's real simple. If you had more people getting hurt than you should have, your modifier would be above a one, and you'd get penalized for that. If the numbers came together and set over three years in time, you had what they predicted, your modifiers is a one. You don't get any benefit or reduction on that. And if you had a good program, and you had less people getting hurt than they predicted, your modifier is below a one, and that's a savings to your county first, and saving people from getting hurt and saving money to your budget. So one of the things I wanted to represent to you guys tonight is Georgetown County's Experience modifier for the current year we're in is a .87. That is a 13% savings over where they predicted you would have been. Not only does it result in less people getting hurt, that saved your county over $140,000 of what your premium would have been. So through your risk management safety programs, not only are you protecting your employees, you're protecting the taxpayers' dollars that you guys have been in charge of. So that's a huge achievement as part of your risk management program. It took everybody to do that. Tonight, the award that we want to present to you is called Outstanding Safety Achievement Award. It's based on an activity your county did when you learned from something that had a benefit down the road to save assets. As you all are well aware of, you had cyber attacks several years ago. Based on that occurrence, you beefed up your cybersecurity, your training, the resources you put in place to educate your employees. Due to COVID, we had a lot of trouble doing hands-on training with people, so we had to get creative. Wanted to let you know that your risk management program teamed up with your IT department for the county and started sending out advertisements, puzzles, all kinds of stuff to educate all your employees on the value of cybersecurity, being able to determine what is a valid and not valid responses to emails. Where this paid off for you was you had an occurrence where your county attorney was in the process of purchasing, buying some property for the county, and was about to transfer some funds electronically. Your finance director had given them a set of numbers to go to the account. Shortly after that was delivered to your county attorney, a second email rolled through that said, "We need to change the routing numbers." Based on the training that just occurred a week before, your county attorney said, "This doesn't look right," and physically called your finance director and said, "Do you want me to make this change in the routing numbers?" Guess what the response was? Heck, no, that's not from me. Someone had actually forged trying to get them to change the routing numbers for some funds to transfer. So that's a great example of training that you all committed, that you teach your people on that resulted in savings to your county. So the way these things have come together could not have happened without you all supporting the financial piece of this, without your county employees buying into the training that went into place, without your IT department putting in the resources, your safety committee, and your risk manager all working together. So this was a great example of how everyone coming together had a huge benefit to your county and prevented, prevented a possible loss. So tonight, I wanted to present to you guys now, Standing Safety Achievement Award for all the great stuff you guys have done specifically for this cybersecurity project. So it's my pleasure to present this to Holly, your IT department, safety committee, and county council for your hard work and dedication. Thank you all for what you all do.
Mr. Chairman, y'all willing to go on? So a great team effort.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, next item up on the agenda, changing gears a little. We want to address the current county holiday, county employee holiday schedule. If you all recall, back in 2020, the county council had a resolution acknowledging the importance of Juneteenth as a holiday. And last year, right at, right at Juneteenth, actually, I think the state of South Carolina adopted that as an official holiday. And we were reviewing this year as the holiday approaches and realized that we didn't somehow dot an i or cross a t and make it an official county holiday. And we were hoping to come back to county council to start observance of the Juneteenth holiday for 2022, which will actually be observed on Monday, June 20.
You've heard the report from Mr. Ackerman. Is there a motion for approval of the holiday schedule?
Go move.
It's moved by Councilman Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Johnson. Any discussion?
Yes, I've got a few comments. When I looked at this, first thing I thought is if there's anybody up here that likes holidays, it's me. But I wanted to look at the baseline. For me, the baseline on holidays is the holidays observed by the federal government. Let me read those to you real quickly here. Starts out with New Year's Day, then the birthday of Martin Luther King Jr., then Washington's Birthday, then Memorial Day, then Juneteenth, National Independence Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Now, if you didn't count those, there's 11 national holidays. All right? Now, I compared that to our holiday list, and I'll go through that list. We've got New Year's Day, we've got Martin Luther King Jr. Day, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving with two days, and then Christmas with three days. That's a total of 13 days. Now, as I said, I love holidays, but I think that we are a little out of line with the country and the private sector here in Georgetown County. I don't think they, I don't think all of these holidays are observed and paid by all the employers here in this county. So I would say that I have no problem with any of them. I'll repeat that. But I think that we need to be given serious thought about getting more in balance with what everybody else is getting away of holidays and take a second look at our list and maybe cut it down and be at least in competition for that number. And I'm not trying to be the Grinch. I just think it's good business for us to do this. I think going from 13 to 14 is just too much. And I've got nothing against any of these holidays. And I'll leave that on the table. And I would like to say that I'd like to amend this and maybe we defer this thing and get our heads together and see what really makes sense. And I hate to be the Grinch, but I think it's time we did that. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion and a second for approval of the new holiday schedule. And did you make a motion to defer?
Yes, sir, I did.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion with a second. You need to vote on that motion first. And then if Mr. Anderson wants to make a motion to revisit the issue, he can do that. But you have a motion with a second that needs a vote at this point.
Okay. In accordance with our legal counsel, we have a motion and a second for approval of the holiday schedule as presented by Mr. Ackerman. All in favor of said motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Mr.?
Well, I would, I think it's my turn. And I would like to make a motion that we defer the previous approved motion until we've had a chance to take a closer look at having 14 holidays per year.
You have a motion by Mr. Anderson, I guess, to amend the previous passed motion, I think.
That's fine, whatever...
For deferment.
Whatever the proper verbiage is, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Is there a second? Without receiving a second, the motion dies. Is there any further business to come before council? Seeing our hearing, is there a motion for adjournment?
Go move.
It's moved by Councilman Carolina. Is there a second? Second by Councilperson Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Be standing adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening.